Coming up.
At this time, I'd like to call the Garden Grove Housing Authority meeting to order with the Secretary. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beckles.
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Here.
Vice Chair Fawn.
Here.
Chair Beard.
Here.
Okay, we have oral communications on housing authority matters. Seeing none. Second items, consent items. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's our second?
I second that.
Call for the vote.
What you receive seven yes votes.
There are no public hearings. Items for consideration, none. Matters from the Chair or Commissioners. We are in adjournment then.
Hey, why don't you let this guy speak? Why don't you let that guy speak? They had their turn to speak beforehand.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. Well, most of these is right. I just, it'd upset you if they had asked. At this time, we'll open the Garden Grove City Council meeting. Ms. Baylor, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Protem Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Broadwater.
Here. Okay, I don't see any presentations tonight. We will, oh, first let's go to the flag.
In vocation.
What?
In vocation.
Okay, we'll go to invocation, the flag.
All right, please prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, as we gather here this evening to deliberate and make decisions on issues before us, provide us with the guidance and wisdom necessary to make the best decisions for this fine community of Garden Grove that we serve. Amen.
Amen.
Chris Fawn, will you please lead?
Yes, sir. Please recite the pledge with me. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no presentations this evening?
That's correct.
Let's go to oral communications. Rena Zohar?
I have lived here in Garden Grove since 91, and I have raised two children at my address there. And I've worked as manager of the apartment complexes, often on indifferent managers that have been there. In 2010, I was hired to be manager for $40 a month, including all duties of manager and landscaper and everything but mowing the lawn. And I have had to call the police for vandalism and graffiti and et cetera, but luckily, I haven't had to call anyone in my apartment building that I can remember. In September, a lady moved in from, I assume it's Puerto Rico, but I'm not sure. She moved in, and the first moment I saw her, my landlord had told me to wait for her. When she came towards me, I, her child went into the garden, and I said, "Hi, do you know where the shopping centers are? Do you know where the churches are? Do you know where the police station is? Do you know where the schools are?" Whatever. I was going into that, and I noticed her child go into the garden. I said, "Please, don't let your kid in the garden." She told me without hesitation, "We don't have to listen to you. We're Americans now, and you're nothing but a gringa." I stopped her, and I told her, "No, I am not your gringa. I don't like racist comments." She goes, "Oh, you don't know what it means." I said, "I'm sorry. My adopted mother, the mother that adopted me from Cuba, made sure that I understood that that was a very low term, and that if anyone were to call me a gringa, to be sure to call them another racist name, and I just don't care to get into that." Since that time, that woman has put feces on my door. She has put feces on all my property that was outside in front of my place. And although I call the police, they tell me there's absolutely no remedy, no legal way of dealing with her because it's not against the law. Now, I've been told that my landlord is responsible to keep my home, or my rental property, clean and sanitary. But no, there are no laws for it, and he just simply says, "You must leave, for they say you are vagrant. You have a police record. You have this and that." And I'm going, I protest. And as of yesterday, they, they came to evict, he told me over the phone that he was going to evict me because I don't like the poop on my door. I don't feel I should have to live like this just because I am renting from him. He is now, all of a sudden, very concerned about giving me new cabinets, which have not been replaced since 91, when they were in the same condition they're in now. I feel that there's got to be some, something done about the fact that when you have a situation where someone from another way of life comes into your neighborhood and decides that they're going to take over, that putting feces is a very easy and simple way of getting rid of people that they don't want. And this unhappily is a problem throughout my street, as there are two other women, single women, that have lived there for some time, and they have been run off with all kinds of baloney and gang members, previous gang members. Okay, let me put it this way. The, the lady that is putting the urine and feces all over my property, her, he said it was her, his cousin. When I first called the police, and they told me there's nothing they can do, they kind of had a party in the neighborhood, and the boy that had robbed me some years before prevented me from leaving my apartment, and told me that these people that are putting feces and everything on my doors, they're cousins, his cousin. And they are taking unfair advantage of me. I have nothing that I can do to prevent them. They have chased me since day one with cellphones, and I am not a Jacqueline Kennedy. I, I'm very emotional, and they do push my buttons, and I have yelled and screamed at them. I feel that my free speech is all I can do. Now, they are taking advantage of the neighborhood. They do want to re-inhabit and live their lifestyle. I don't, I don't feel it's fair. I feel that the problem with landlords not keeping a place sanitary, even telling the truth to the people.
Your time has run out, and let me, I'm not a lawyer. You see that red light?
Mm-hmm.
You get five minutes, and then it's over with. And let me just explain to you. What you're doing, I'm not a lawyer, but it seems to me that you've got a civil matter there. I mean, if, a civil matter, and you probably need to-
There's no laws against it.
I didn't mean that, but there is probably a law that he has to upkeep your apartment. He's going to take your rents. I would think that you have the ability to take him either into small claims court or Superior Court and deal with the cost he's costing you.
I, I called it in as a hate crime the first time she called. I told them, "There is an agenda going on." All the reports, I've made frequent reports since September when that woman moved in. From the first day, I said, "This is a hate crime. This woman is out and agenda against me for some reason."
Then you need to talk to the District Attorney's Office.
I'm seeing an attorney tomorrow.
The District Attorney's Office, if it's a hate crime, that's who you need to talk to. That's not us. That's the District Attorney. If it's a legitimate hate crime, they were the ones that'll do something about it.
Is there, is there any way you can do something about, because this is a technique that is being used-
You're not listening to me. Just listen to me, please. It's a civil matter between you and your landlord. Your landlord is the one that has to keep that, keep that place cleaned up. And if he's not, you're paying rent for it to be that way. So you need to take him into a small claims court or civil court for the amount of, whatever it costs you to clean it up. But it is a civil matter. Now, as far as a hate crime, that is something you want to talk to the District Attorney about.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Malik Hazar. I represent Taxi Drivers Association of Orange County. This association was formed recently to look out for the benefits of the taxi drivers in Orange County. And I'm here to talk about the issues facing these drivers. And the city of Garden Grove is a member of the Steering Committee, what they call OCTAP, Orange County Taxi Administration Program. And 34 of the cities have a seat, including Garden Grove. Now, it's the city's duty, Committee, Councilmember's duty to oversee the operations. And so far in 11 years, OCTAP has done nothing, nothing to benefit the drivers. And no Councilmember has questioned that.
That's not true. You've had people up here before to talk to us about it, and what we told them was, they're talking about getting other taxis taken that shouldn't be taken, and we told them, "Get their license number, and we look into it." Never once did anybody ever come back with a license number for us to look into.
All right, well.
Just, I want to keep you online.
I can't agree or disagree with that, but anyway, OCTAP has met its objectives. In the last three months since the formation of this Taxi Driver Association, the city's three major companies, Anaheim Yellow Cab, Cabco Yellow Cab, and A-Taxi have put in 428 new cabs. OCTAP licensed these cabs in three months. Now, imagine if you had 428 new restaurants, 428 new clubs, 428 new amusement parks, 428 new universities, 428 new liquor stores. That would be a concern for every city. And I think the last meeting on April 18th, none of the city members spoke or even mentioned as to why this happened. And I'm here to know if the city of Garden Grove is really concerned. Is it concerned about its citizens? Are you concerned about the drivers who live in the city of Garden Grove? And I mean, I hate to quote this, but President Bush said it clearly, "You're either with us or you're against us." And if you're, if you're with us, then we, I would like to request you to listen to us and, you know, get an inquiry into this issue. And if you're not, then, you know, we'll leave you alone, and we worry about it at the next election cycle. OCTAP, its Steering Committee, has never had a driver representative. You have 34 city representatives. You have company representatives. You have safety representatives, but no driver representative, not one driver representative. I request the city of Garden Grove at the next OCTAP meeting on July 18th to vote to have a driver representative. Also, I send a letter to your highness, your-
My highness?
Telling you of our issues, and we're going to fight for it. And we mentioned Tyrol. And, you know, we asked for the, we gave the people 30 days to give us some of our demands. The demands are not extremely, or even vaguely unreasonable. They are simple demands, to have our permit valid for two years. We're getting charged $115 and getting a permit for one year. You can't renew your taxi permit by mail. You have to go in and take new pictures, and you have to do an H6 printout. You can go to any, any small one-desk office in any city in America, and that little, that little desk guy can take out your H6 printout. OCTAP is charging all this money, and they can't do an H6 printout. They don't have a digital camera with all the money they charge us to take pictures. And Tyrol is going to be a reality, and I'm just here to let you know. If Tyrol happens, then you are informed, and you knew it. And I don't think it's good for the customers. I don't think it's good for the tourists to come to visit us. But if nothing is going to be heard, the drivers are hurting. The drivers are hurting. They cannot afford to pay the rent. Leases have gone up. It costs $850 to lease a cab to drive in Orange County, $850 a week, plus gas. I mean, how many fares do you-
Who monitors this? I mean, it's not us.
Yeah.
OCTAP.
Right. Who monitors this?
OCTAP monitors it.
OCTAP? Well, why aren't you talking to OCTAP, whoever they are?
Well, we do OCTAP, but then OCTAP, every city has a representative. And I, since I'm not a member of the Steering Committee, I'm a member of the public, just like here.
Why don't you make an appointment here? You can call City Hall, make an appointment with me, and we'll sit down and see what you're talking about, and see if that, we can actually be of any help for you. I mean, as far as some cab company buying 428 new cabs, that's a free enterprise system. There's nothing we can do about that.
I, I agree. It's free enterprise, but there's a limit to everything, sir. I don't-
There's a limit to the free enterprise system.
If 428 buses came on the road in city of Garden Grove-
Okay. If you want to talk some more about it, get ahold of me. I'd be more than happy to spend some time with you and see if we can help you. Your time is up, sir.
All right, thank you.
Oh, wait a minute. Just a minute. This young lady wants to ask you a question.
Can you give me the letters to OCTAP? The letters.
OCTAP.
Okay. And you said you just formed your association three months ago?
Yes.
What is it called?
Taxi Drivers Association of Orange County, TDAOC.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Tony Flores.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman, Councilman and staff. I'm Tony Flores. We have five minutes to speak up here. I think I'm, we can, oh, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Tony. We appreciate it very much.
I know you do. Any case, following on our last conversation on districts, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure we had the record straight. You said that I had changed my mind on districts, and I really hadn't. I believe in districts, but under general law. And we can have districts under general law. There's a couple of government codes that address that. And actually, when we put the initiative together back in 2006, it was pursuant those particular government codes that we put that initiative into effect, and we didn't get the signatures needed then, but we're still going to be talking about that. So again, I agree with Mr. Beard that I think districts will be the way to go in Garden Grove. You mentioned Boise Cascade last time out in West Garden Grove, and the sales taxes, et cetera. What you didn't mention was the fact that it's in the redevelopment agency, or was, anyway. It was put in there in 1974, came out last year. It's like 38 years in the agency. So all of that growth, as you know, the tax increment growth of the property tax was tax increment that went back into the redevelopment agency. And I talked to the Orange County Property Tax Assessor's Office today to confirm this information. And we, we're not quite sure where we're seeing the benefit of it because it was stuck in there. But now that it's out, I think we should be getting some of those-
Let me ask you a question. I trust you looked into this.
Yes, sir.
Now, was I talking about sales tax or property tax?
You talked about sales tax.
That's correct. And it didn't go back into the, the sales tax went right into the city, city fund.
Yes, sir. But I'm talking about tax-
Don't make it sound like it didn't, though. You should say it-
No, no, no. What I'm saying is that that's a different deal, but, but the tax growth, the tax increment is something else. And that's where some of the, the benefit comes of the tax agencies like police, fire, and schools. I think you're aware of that. Any case, so I just wanted to make sure that we covered that because we want to see where the benefits are to the city, and we'll be talking about that at the public hearing. Also, too, remember last year, or actually 2011 memo, where we had to put up $8 million to get into that voluntary, let me see what this is called again, just so I have it right. Oops. The, I'm tearing my pages right now. Let's see here. I just messed that one up. Any case, when we-
You're talking about 827?
Pardon me?
You're talking about 827? Assembly Bill 27?
No, sir. Well, yes and no, but I'm talking about the money that we put up, the $8 million that we put, stand there.
It was found unconstitutional.
Understood. But, but to keep that thing moving, we're putting dollars in, which is where I'm getting into next-
We didn't put any money into it. We didn't pay money.
Is the 40, well, hang on a second. We, last week, we were talking about a, I'm sorry, last council meeting, $43 million in a bond anticipation notes to help fund the water park. And my question there is, is that can we, at some point in time, put up on the city website, when we go to do these types of funding and these projects, is there any way we can put it on the website to help the citizens follow along and how the financing is done? I think we'd like to see that. This way, we're all clear on what's going on, and we have an idea of how it's happening, if you wouldn't mind, so we can see how it's being funded. Also, too, along with that, we'd like to see the campaign statements or contributions put online as well, if that's a possibility. The staff does a great job on putting staff reports up. Maybe we can get those on there as well. I know you don't have to answer me right now, yes or no, but just asking. And then also to-
You're trying to take money away from us, aren't you?
Excuse me?
You're trying to take money away from us, aren't you?
I wouldn't do that, you know.
Incentive pay.
I need to help you. I need to help you out. No, it's online. It's online.
If it's not online, we lose a 10 cents.
It's online. We're making millions, Mayor, on those hotels, so you say. Any case, and before I leave tonight, I also wanted to thank Mr. Bill Murray, who's been doing a great job, by the way, keeping us informed. He was the liaison with the OCTA project out there at Valley View in the 405, doing a great job communicating with the citizens. He's also gotten involved with the Cypress project that may or may not be going in. I know they're in the early development stages there, but, but Mr. Murray has been doing a great job communicating with us. So just wanted to thank you, say thank you to Mr. Murray for his help. Good evening, folks.
Tai Wu.
Good evening, City Council. Today, I've come here to address a problem regarding about the halfway house on the address 10541. I live right next door to them as 10551. I sent two letters to the City Council in August 9, and also in October 15 regarding about this matter. I'm here to represent on behalf of my neighborhood, and everybody was really frustrated and also very afraid of this house because they continue running with a whole bunch of drug people in there, alcohol people. It's happened last week again. We called police station multiple times. We come down to talk to the lieutenant, and he said basically, "It's nothing he can do to address this matter for us," besides keep, continue calling them. And the owner of this house, which is Mr. Chung Luong, applied for the permit to rent this house as a residential rental. This is a record. But he ran his house actually as a sober living, with no background checks or whatever. The house, sometime up to 20 people live in that house, and they actually threw in drug, needle, all cap alcohol bottle in my backyard. And I called the police out to witness for that and take care of the matter. The police told me, "Why don't you clean it up yourself?" That's the first thing. In June last year, I-
Who was the policeman that told you that?
You know what? The policeman, I, there's three of them come down that day, but that I was so frustrated, but in record of the police station. And in June, after the public meeting in my neighborhood in the Coda Sack, talking, addressing about this matter with Officer Chris in the community liaison, I believe, she was saying basically, "It's a sober living," and she know really well about this matter. The next night, I got home at 2:00 AM the morning from work. I get attacked by two Caucasian male right in front of my house. August 9, I'll come into the City Council with 175 signature from my neighborhood to want to be addressed this problem. Basically, these people tried to scare me because I live right next door to them, and they, you know, came over several times and, you know, threatening my mom. My mother is 60 years old and live by herself at home. I live with her, but I'm not in country a lot. So that's why it's become a big concern for my own family and also for the whole neighborhood because right across from this house is kindergarten school. Behind that house is another school for the little kid. And this man, leaving this address, has no identity check, so whatever. And like I say again, is up to 20 people live at one point, and they can rent them by hour. And I have the proof here from one of the manager in that house, give it to us before he quit. He's saying this house running with no record, no nothing checking, basically worse than a motel. When you check in a motel, at least you check their background. But these people give out this yellow card to their tenant, and say, "Just call in, and you can rent it up to two hour or one night." And, you know, how do you feel when you put my family next to this cap situation? And the only thing they have is a permit for residential rental, up to a family for sick people. And these people not a family. You don't even know who they are and what they're doing in this house. Last Sunday, I called the police three times. They came over and witnessed a crime in action. They don't even show up. The second time, they drove by. I stood right in front of my property to make sure that evidence is still there. It's a big old bag of drug, and nobody stopped by. After 45 minutes, the third time I called, I said, I get so frustrated, I say, "Why don't you guys come over right now?" Because the bag of drug and alcohol bottle is still there in the bush. Then they show up. The guy already run out and pick it up. And, you know, the guy, when they pick it up, I don't even know who he is. He only in the neighborhood for like one day. And he bring up the bag, and then he make sure I see it. And in the back is a bag something, it look like weed inside, and a gigantic bottle of alcohol. So I don't know, you know, I'll come here today and asking for the City Council, at least you guys can do something to make a safety of my own family and also the whole neighborhood, because nobody can able to walk on the street and feel safe over there anymore. I moved here 12 years ago because I think Garden Grove is a good environment for my family, and I think it's a good school for my kid, but at this point-
Okay, you're out of time now. Okay, you're out of time now. Come up for air for just a minute here. Why don't you contact myself, you can contact the City Hall and ask if you want to have a meeting with me, and we're going to have the police chief there, and we're going to go over all those stats and everything that you just said, and see what we can do about that.
I talked to the police chief with my neighbor probably two, three months ago.
You didn't talk to him with the mayor, did you?
No.
Let's try, let's try that. Let's try talking to him with the mayor, okay?
I will.
And then see what we can do for you.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck to you, thanks. Peter Katz.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and residents. On behalf of the Vietnam War Museum of America, once again, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about history. We just heard from a young lady here. Her family came to this country for a better life. And soldiers like myself help defend their ancestors and their relatives, so that they could have the freedom and the choice to live in a great country like we have here today. And I sympathize a lot with this young lady. We defended those rights and those liberties, and we still do that today. What I would like to remind people of, it's thirty-eight years ago, Monday was April 29, 1975, the end of the Vietnam War in history books. There are two celebrations this coming week, in honor of the South Vietnamese soldiers and the American soldiers that died on behalf of the freedom of the Vietnamese people. And those are in Freedom Park in Westminster. And this great city that's building a museum to the Vietnam War is working closely, I hope, with the city of Westminster in supporting the efforts of honoring and remembering those soldiers that gave their lives, so these people can come here and be free like the rest of Americans. We fought a lot of wars in our history. The Two Soldiers Memorial in Westminster was a struggle to get that done with the City Council. But let me tell you a little bit, there are two events, one is Sunday, April 28th, and it's at 11:00 a.m. at Freedom Park in Westminster, and again on April 30th at 5:00 p.m. So, for those people that want to pay their respects to the fallen soldiers of the South Vietnamese Army and the American Army that fought to defend South Vietnam, these families will greatly appreciate that. But on that day in 1975, Operation Frequent Wind, April 29, 1975, thirty-eight years ago, a great day, a solemn day in history, where fifty-eight thousand two hundred some Americans lost their lives, three hundred of them from here in Orange County. But that wasn't the end of the Vietnam War. I mean, that was what the history books say, but wars are never ending. Two weeks later, on May 12, 1975, the Cambodian Camerouge Navy seized the American ship, container ship, the SS Myagez. The regime seized the ship in the Gulf of Thailand. Americans, Vietnamese, and foreign nationals were aboard this ship. Two days later, on May 14, 1975, the Second Battalion of the Ninth Marines landed a team and made an assault landing on Kao Tang Island off the coast of Cambodia in a rescue attempt, supported by Air Force helicopter gunships. The Myagez was found empty and adrift in the sea. The crew was later recovered at sea by the USS Wilson of the United States Navy. The next day, on May 15, 1975, the United States withdrew after sustaining fifteen soldiers killed in action, three missing in action to this day, forty-nine wounded, and twenty-three others were killed when one of the helicopters crashed in the sea. So, freedom is never free, and you saw that this week in Boston. The war on terror continues. This part of the world where these two young boys were from started World War I. The Archduke Ferdinand was assassinated with a bomb in Saranave, not far from there, where these kids grew up. World War II, one of the most pivotal battles of the World War II at Stalingrad, was not far from here. So, you know, this war continues to this very day, and I'm reminded of just one remark that was made by a Brei father who lost a son in the war in Iraq, and he said, do not just take life for granted. We have an obligation to those who paid for our freedom to be good, decent, and law-abiding citizens. So, that's what you can do to respect the soldiers that fought. And on behalf, once again, of all American soldiers that have fought, this is a great opportunity for people to speak their mind and defend their freedom. So, let's not forget, freedom is not free. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Josh McIntosh.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, good residents of Garden Grove. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. That was sure one great study session we just had in the next room there, and it really, really gave me some positive thoughts for the city. For all of you who weren't there, you missed out on something really cool. Good things might happen here. And with that in mind, I want to introduce something that I think would be very good for us. We've had a lot of headaches over redevelopment and the successor agency, and, you know, sometimes we don't know all the information, we don't know what's being spent on what, where the benefits are, and, you know, it's caused a lot of discussion and a lot of oral communications up here. And I think I have somewhat of a solution to something like this. They're called P R Cs, Project Review Committees. A project review committee would be made up of volunteer residents in Garden Grove that are concerned for our city. They would be given access to the contracts for major projects before the contracts are signed, sort of on the ground level, up with the planning commission, with the City Council. And the citizens would be given this group that could vote upon things and say whether they like them or they don't like them, or, hey, they forgot the parking structure on this one, and that has been left out. So, things like that could possibly be avoided if we had a second group of eyes looking at the contracts before they're signed. Lots of counties, such as Sacramento and all across the nation, have these. I think it'd be a great idea for Garden Grove. You know, you've got a lot of concerned citizens that show up here each week, and we do truly care for our city, whether we're elected officials or just it's in our heart. I think it'd be a nice thing to implement. Please look into them, and I'd love to sit down and talk with you guys in the future about this, maybe have a little pow-wow. What this is, would do, it'd give the citizens a voice and a little bit of power, because I know a lot of us wish we did have such. And, community note, the Old Lang Zeine Club of Garden Grove, the oldest social club in Garden Grove, is having a meeting this Friday afternoon at 11:30 in the Ackroyd Hall of the Methodist Church. Anyone that has the Friday afternoon off might want to come down there. And there's a lunch by Zlakets, it's always a lot of fun. You reminisce about the history of Garden Grove with some of its oldest residents. And of course, we've got our barn sale Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this week at the Historical Society. Whoever comes down, I'll see you there, I'll be working that. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
I have no more cards. At this time, we will close the oral communication, and we will recess the council and go to the successor.
Charles has a card?
Not in my book. Charles? Charles, you can't talk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Usually, on Monday mornings, I go over to the senior center. There's a group of us that like to play cards there. Now, the remodeling that was done here in our community center is beautiful. They did a marvelous job on those restrooms. It's almost a pleasure to use them. However, like any other project, it's ongoing, and on the other side of that wall is the senior center. Their restrooms have been closed for a month. They're still working on them. I retired as a store superintendent, so I'm fully aware of how construction jobs can get delayed. And it's very frustrating, because when there is an event in the community center, they lock the door going from the senior center to the community center, because people have paid for the use of that particular facility, and they have a right to keep people out until their program is finished. It makes it difficult for seniors with walkers or wheelchairs to be able to get to a restroom. I think there needs to be more coordination between the community center staff and the senior center staff, as far as when events are going to take place, so at least they can post a notice to let people know they're not going to be able to go through that doorway to access these beautiful new restrooms. So, hopefully, the new ones will be completed in the senior center, and everything will be fine. Yesterday, there was an incident that occurred on my street. There was an older gentleman riding a small bicycle who fell down in the middle of the street. I found out about this from my neighbor, and my neighbor went to help him. The man was totally drunk, and he ended up lying there in the street. Cars were trying to get around him. So, my neighbor helped him over to the lawn, and the guy was combative, was taking swings at him. My neighbor just said, okay, I'm trying to give you a hand here without getting you in trouble, but the man would not cooperate, so my neighbor made a call to the police department. The police responded within two minutes. Three patrol cars were there to take care of the situation. I want to commend Chief Rainey for his remarkably prompt staff and the job that they do in this city. On Main Street, this program that we just watched next door was very interesting and very exciting, but there's a lot of things that can be done now for Main Street that are just tidying up. The bullards that are supposed to be lined up along Main Street to protect the businesses from cars crashing into them, many of them are missing, knocked over. I think funds should be able to be found to replace those, at least give that a sense of looking right. I recently made a trip on the last few Mondays up to Chapman University to help out in a students program up there, and driving up Glissel, I was stunned by how friendly and inviting that street is up there. I know it's a college town, and they have a lot more activities there than we do, but I'd like to see Main Street looking the same way. And finally, about the Gem Theater, my wife and I, the first time it opened, we got season tickets. We enjoyed many of the productions there. However, the next year, we waited to get informed of when the season tickets would be available. We never heard. I even called, never got a response. I welcome the Gem Theater reopening, and I hope they get someone in there as a business manager who can follow through with the great productions they have, and make sure people get a chance to sign up for season tickets, so that they'll be able to see these great productions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will recess the City Council, and we'll go to the successor agency.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll call to order the April 23 meeting of the successor agency, and Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. Consent items, just the minutes and approval of the warrants.
Move issue.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, items for consideration, four A.
Mr. Chairman, that item is being pulled, and will be brought back at a later date.
Okay. Any matters from members?
Seeing then, we're adjourned, back to council.
Okay, at this time, we will go to the sanitary district.
I'd like to open up the Garden Grove Sanitary District. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fawn?
Here.
This time consent items, the minutes from the meeting held on March 26.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, and we have two items for consideration. First up, four A.
Mr. President, that's approval of a reimbursement agreement with the city of Santa Ana, and Dave Esmeinger is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. President, members of the board, staff recommends that Garden Grove Sanitary District Board approve the attached agreement with the city of Santa Ana for sanitary sewer construction in Westminster Avenue. Garden Grove and Santa Ana are participants in a joint sewer agreement that includes a sewer line in Westminster Avenue. It has been determined that the sewer main is capacity deficient. The project spans from Roxy Drive westerly to Harbor Boulevard, and replaces approximately thirty-three hundred and fifty feet of eight-inch clay pipe with a fifteen-inch diameter clay The cost estimate of design and construction is $1,520,000, and based on contributory flows, Garden Grove Sanitary District will be responsible for approximately $1,030,000 of that. Sufficient sewer funds are available to finance this project. It is therefore recommended that the board approve the attached agreement in the amount of $1,029,973, and authorize the general manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the Garden Grove Sanitary District and make minor modifications as appropriate. This concludes staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
I said one quick question. Can you explain to us as far as why there's not a fifty-fifty division between the cost and why are we bearing two-thirds of the cost?
Mr. President, members of the board, it's, it's in accordance with the shared sewer agreement, it's strictly prorated based on the amount of flow contributing from each agency.
Amount of use, basically?
Yes.
Thank you. Move approval? Please.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Item four B?
Mr. President, item four B is a word of contract for the construction of a sewer pump station, and Dave Esmeinger is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. President, members of the board, staff recommends that Garden Grove Sanitary District Board award the contract to Pasco and Lugwood Constructors for the construction of Belgrave Lift Station replacement. Garden Grove inherited Belgrave Lift Station from Midway Sanitary District in 1997, when the district boundaries were redefined. This lift station is over sixty years old. The project is to reconstruct the lift station with reconfiguration of piping, well storage, electric panels, emergency generators, security enclosure, and other pertinent improvements. Staff pre-qualified contractors per the public contract code, two qualified bids were received March 18th in the city clerk's office. The lowest responsible bidder is Pasco Lugwick Constructors with a total bid of $2,010,300,000. References, license, required bonds, and other documentation has been verified by staff. There is no impact to the general fund, and sufficient sewer funds are available to finance this project. It is therefore recommended that the board award contract to Pasco Lugwood Constructors for the Belgrave Lift Station replacement project in the amount of $2,010,300, and authorize the general manager to execute the contract on behalf of the Garden Grove Sanitary District and make. on behalf of the Garden Grove Sanitary District and make minor modifications as required. This staff, this concludes staff report and I'm available to answer any questions on this project.
Any questions?
I have a question. Go ahead.
What's the longevity of the lift station?
Design life is in the neighborhood of 50 years, sir.
How long's the project gonna take, estimate?
The project is scheduled for 165 calendar days. It's a very aggressive schedule. The, some of the equipment has been preordered by city via separate contract in order to expedite construction and provide less inconvenience to the neighbors during this construction.
That's my point, too. There's gonna be a major, well, the inconvenience, the impact to that area. There's a preschool, there's a church, there's a high residential, a lot of density in that area. We're gonna take special efforts to notify, alert, work with the community out in that area?
Yes, Council, Board Member Beard. We are in constant contact with the Montessori School and the Jehovah Witnesses at that location and also the homeowners association with the condo units off to the side there.
Okay.
We have been in constant contact with them. We have a very aggressive schedule. We have some very severe liquidated damages in place in order to accommodate these people because the city in turn will pay penalties if they exceed those workdays.
So you accelerate the schedule to have less of an impact in the area. It's gonna, there will be an impact, though. Just notifications will be given out to that whole area. That's the main concern I have.
Right, there's no getting around it. It's a very critical lift station to get over the Belgrave Channel. So it drains a large sewer shed and right now it's just operating on paper clips and rubber bands. We just really have to fix that lift station.
Well, I'm sure people understand that. They just wanna be informed and aware and prepared for what's gonna happen. And it's 165 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Move to approve?
I'll move the issue.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other matters?
Motion received, five yes votes.
I always keep doing that, sorry, Madam Clerk. Any other matters from the board? All right, we'll adjourn back to city council and recommitted on May 28 at 6:30 here at the community center.
Okay, we'll go forward with the city council. We're at oral communication, no, not oral, communications. We're at, I'm lost here. We're at...
Consent item.
Consent items.
Mayor, item 7C is tangent to something that I recused myself on before, so I'm gonna pull that one and I'll move the balance.
Okay, we have a motion for the balance.
Move to approve.
Call for vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, 7C. Approval of density bonus housing agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, can you go ahead and report the action on closed session? Which was or was?
There was no reportable action as a result of the closed session in Charleston versus the City of Garden Grove.
There's no reportable action. Just what he said. Okay, let's go forward. 7F.
Wait a minute, no, 8?
8A, public hearing.
8A.
Mr. Mayor, 8A is a public hearing to consider a resolution establishing and amending our user fees for various city services. And Ann Eifert is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fattal. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, you have before you a resolution establishing and amending user fees for various city services. The master fee schedule combines city fees into one document and it is periodically updated as needed. All city departments have reviewed the current fees charged, studied the costs of services being provided, and identified fees that should be added or considered for adjustment. These fees are being proposed to offset newer increased costs of providing the services and include various fees for facility and sport field rentals and other community services fees. These proposed changes will allow the city to recover approximately $25,000 in costs each year depending on the level and nature of services provided. A public hearing is required for the establishment and amendment of these fees. If approved, the new fees will become effective July 1, 2013. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council conduct the public hearing and adopt the attached resolution establishing and amending user fees for various city services. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. I got an email forwarded by our city clerk from Maureen Blackman. Is this the issue that the email is concerning about the, they wanna postpone of the hearing?
I actually spoke with that resident and explained to her what fees were being established. And she didn't have any further questions. I had, I gave her my contact information to pass along her other homeowners association members and I didn't receive any further questions.
So we did give the proper notice?
Oh, correct.
For residents? And how long, how long was the notice?
We had two notices in the newspaper and the information was available 10 days prior to the public hearing.
Okay, that's all I needed, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Flores?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. While I have some objections, maybe they're not strong, but I did read through this and we do have a number of new charges and some that are increased by a little bit, some increased by a lot. But I guess my question would be, is this, is that we're, again, we're making all this money supposedly off the hotels. In your campaign statement in November 12th, you said we're making 13 million. In your April meeting two weeks ago, you said we're at 12 million as far as what the hotels are generating. And we're talking about, again, the benefits of the community. It looks like we're nickel-and-diming people in some areas. And the question, of course, is that, you know, we've got these reports where we have negative millions here and there. For example, the Horwath, March 23, 2010, letter to our city talking about a negative $41 million to get the project started. Then last week, we talked about a 31.5 negative million to get that project started. There's just some questions, I guess, that come up and ask me, well, when do we really see the benefits? I mean, if we're doing so well in these areas, the hotels, for example, why are we keep, we keep charging here and there, little by little? And I understand that these are for folks that may not live in our city, but, you know, if we're trying to get folks in here and they're tourists and whatnot and we're trying to pack the hotels, they may be looking at some of this information. So what can we do to maybe make it a little more palatable? Measure why we're supposed to do that for us. You know, we're supposed to raise 1.5 million. And, you know, we said we're gonna use that money specifically for, to help preserve the general city services such as police, fire, protection, street operations, maintenance, parks, and recreation services, which is part of this particular document here. So when are we seeing it? You know, if we look back when we all ran at one time or another in our campaign promises, for example, yours from 1990, and it's in here talking about the...
1990?
Yes, sir. I'm a fan of yours, I keep all your stuff.
You must.
Uh-huh. Any case, but you kinda changed your opinion since then. And you were all over Mr. Krieger about his quote-unquote boondoggle and what it was gonna cost the taxpayers in redevelopment agency allocated funds, et cetera.
The problem is, is I lost that election. See, so what I was saying, it didn't work.
Well, of course not, you didn't have developer backing then. But you have it now. And congratulations. But any case, be that as it may, I think we should take a harder look at that and maybe we can do something else to kinda ease the quote-unquote pain on the citizens. So that's my objection and my presentation on this particular subject. Thank you.
Any further, anybody else wanna comment on this issue?
I was gonna, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I was going to speak about the Gem Theater, but I did step out and I'm not sure. We kinda zipped through some of the items. This would be regarding consent item 7A for the Gem. May I speak on that?
No, you missed it.
I missed it. Did you call my name?
We already voted on it.
Did you call my name?
You talked during the rolls for that. You don't talk specific, a different...
See, you don't get to, you don't get to take this apart. I mean, now, this, what is speaking right now, everybody gets a chance at a public hearing. But everything we vote on is not a public hearing. That's why you speak in advance. The Brown Act says that you have a right to speak on any one of these issues and we give you that opportunity in advance.
That's fine, that's fine. Let's move ahead.
All right. At this time, we will close the public hearing. I don't see anybody else wants to say it. I'd like to address some of the things that Tony talked about. I mean, why do we have to have more money? Why do we have to have more money? I was asked that question in this last election when I was interviewed by the Santa Ana Register. And my answer to them was that when I was a paper boy selling newspapers at the corner of Randolph and Atlantic in Maywood, I was selling the daily paper for a nickel and I was selling the Sunday paper for a dime. Now, just recently, I actually, I don't subscribe to the Register. I don't want them to get any more of my money than they possibly can. But I did need a copy of it, so I went down to the store to buy the Sunday paper and it was $2.25. That's a long ways from a dime. Why do we need that? Why do we need these increases? I mean, I was making a dollar, when I got out of high school, I was making a dollar and a dime on wages, minimum wage, dollar and a dime. Today, it's way above that. Everything is above it. I mean, basically, gasoline was, gasoline was 27 cents a gallon. I mean, today, it's headed for $5 a gallon is what they're working at. You know, our fees that we have set aside for certain things have certain cost or we wouldn't be charging a fee for it. And we occasionally have to increase those fees, just like the Register increased the price of their newspaper from 10 cents to 2.25. I'm sure there was a lot of increases over those years. But the truth of the matter is, we're just not, we, our hands are tied on a lot of things. We can't increase property taxes. We can't increase sales, well, we could increase sales taxes with a vote. It would never pass. You know, I mean, there's certain things that our hands are extremely tied on. And I don't know if that's good or bad, but it sure hurts when you have to run a city and the prices of everything go up for the city just like they do for the regular economy. So that's why we're doing this tonight. Anyway, any other comments from anybody?
Question or clarification? So these increases are primarily based on, say, increases in utilities, you know, electrical for the lighting and such. They're due to an increase of the labor charges for people working these events. So in essence, I think the staff report details very well the justification and hasn't itemized as to why the increases are such. So I just wanna make it clear, this is a cost recovery of $25,000. This is not making revenue for the city. This is recouping our costs. And the speaker mentioned himself, this is not just for residents, this is for non-residents, this is for nonprofits. So the city's not in the business of subsidizing, yeah, outside groups or this and that. Yeah, we provide our levels of service. We open up these services to the community. But if there's a fee, if there's a birthday party at Atlanta's Play Center, the city shouldn't pick up the tab for a private party as such. We should charge accordingly to whoever comes in to use those facilities. And that, that's what it shows here in this report. And I think that's what we're voting on tonight, an increase for cost recovery. So I just wanna make that clear. We're not, this is not a revenue generating effort on the city, it's just recouping our costs. And like I say, it's well justified line on by line on. It's labor charges, it's utility expenses and such that we pass on to those users and a user fee, so to speak. So am I clear on that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
For clarification, 'cause I heard Tony said something earlier. This applies to everyone who uses the facility, not residents outside of Garden Grove? Right? Includes resident in Garden Grove?
It does actually include residents also outside of Garden Grove, but they actually pay a higher non-resident fee.
But the increase applies to our residents as well?
Applies to everyone who utilizes the facility or the field.
Well, I had a chance to look through this and it has a lot to do with the usage by our children and families and a lot to do with quality of life. And then I looked at the financial impact and it was only a $25,000 increase, which could affect about almost 200,000 people in Garden Grove. So I, I'm not gonna support it this time.
Just to clarify, the last time we had a master fee increase was 1994, is that right?
No, that was when it was adopted. We periodically update it. The last time we came was last year.
Last year.
Just to add, yeah, this fee would probably be better at another time. But I think during this time, we're still struggling and families still struggling to get back and we don't have very much. And I'd like to preserve it the way it is so that we offer more of a chance for quality of life for everyone in our city. And, but if you were gonna impose a fee for people outside of the city a little bit more, I might consider that. But for the way it is right today, I am not supporting it today.
Entertainer motion.
Move approval?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, four yes votes, with Councilmember Nguyen voting no.
Let's go to number 11, an ordinance is presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, that'd be ordinance number 2828, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove amending Title I, Chapter 22 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to administrative citations and making certain related findings.
Entertain a motion.
So move?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Mr. Beard?
Yeah, I wanna say hello to the Pacific High School students out there who are doing their civics project. Hello. And where's Alex Beard, by the way? He's at a swim meet, I think. Welcome. I know you're doing, it must be close to the end of the school year. We have C students out here. Welcome to our council meeting. We had some speakers comment on the Gem Theater. It's starting, it's gonna be opening up pretty soon. It's in May. Other May events coming up and there'll be a lot of advance notice on this. And all the events is the Strawberry Festival is on its way. I do so look forward to that. What a fun event. Councilmember Fawn and I were at the Atlanta's Play Center. That's coming up for the, is it the 50th? For, and we're starting to clean that up. Groups, volunteer groups, Rotary was out there. What was the other group, the youth group?
They were from Balsa Grande High School.
Yeah, and it was great, a great day, great event. And it just demonstrates the volunteer spirit of our community. With that, there was a Silver Spoons event just up that was recognized this last weekend. Volunteers in all capacities with all civic groups. And thank you so much for all you do out there. It's just a wonderful group of people we have in the city who spend their time to help out for worthwhile causes and I thank them so much. And one final shout out to Casey Beard. My son is going to the state championships for swimming, OCC College. And so I just wanna wish him the best this Friday. His mom and I will be there and we look forward to going and thank you very much.
Dina?
Yes, first off, I wanna call all Americans in Garden Grove to join me and to, with a prayer and condolence for all American citizens who suffer the terrorist attack in Boston and Texas. We extend our prayers to them and their families. Second of all, I'd like to have some kind of maybe communication from staff regarding OCTAP. I'd like to know more about it, what's our liability or non-liability. The speaker today has said we're liable for a lot of things and I haven't heard about those, so I'd like to see if we are really liable for OCTAP. And I'd like to also congratulate Casey going to CIF championship. That's a really tough, a tough job to do and it's going to be tougher at the CIF. So I wish him a lot of luck. And remember to buy in Garden Grove. It's, we have a lot of shops opening up, especially on Harbor and Garden Grove and lots of restaurants. Enjoy yourself, especially on Harbor Boulevard.
Mr. Pham?
Thank you, sir. I just wanna make a comment that when I voted yes for that increase in the fees, it was not made lightly. I understand that we are going through some very hard times here. So even though it was a yes, it was a very close yes for me. And I understand that's a tough decision for a lot of people to understand and to handle sometimes. It's a tough economy. And I, too, use a lot of the facilities... use a lot of the facilities that will be increased as well. So I guess we're all in this together, so I hope you understand, appreciate the vote yes I had to make. In addition to that, I wanna say, please come out to support the Vietnam War remembrance this coming weekend. There is actually, with what Mr. Peter Katz said, there's gonna be two events. I believe there will be actually one event on the 27th of April, which is a Saturday evening at 5 o'clock, where it's gonna be sponsored by the Vietnamese-American community over at the Vietnam War Memorial over at Freedom Park there on All American Way in Westminster. The following day at 11 o'clock is when we're having the 10-year anniversary of the Vietnam War Memorial, and I see a lot of young faces out in the audience. I invite the members of our community to come out there to remember those who sacrificed and gave so much for the war that I think in many ways ended not so well for us as a country. But I, and along with Councilmember Dina Nguyen, are testaments of the fact that because of their sacrifice, we are here. So I wish to invite everybody out there to join us in remembering their hard-earned sacrifice and the blood and the tears they gave to give us the freedom we have today and continue to give for this great nation, so please come out and support. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Just wanna comment that I had the great pleasure of attending and participating in the Sic La Via event in Los Angeles this last weekend, together with our police chief and a couple of our director-level staff, just looking at how they pulled off a 100,000-person event where they actually had to close down streets and allow for people to get out and on their bicycles around town and experience the city of LA from a different light. It was very exciting and very encouraging. There's a lot of positive ideas floating around town here now. Look forward to the emergence of some new family, fun, healthy, cross-cultural oriented events coming up in Garden Grove.
Well, first of all, I'd like to mention something that Josh brought up. He said that we ought to have special organizations to, of non, I mean, non-elected officials to take a look at every project and give it a yea or a nay. Well, we already have that. It's called the Planning Commission. We have seven people appointed, they're not elected officials, and they go through everything, and they give it a yea or a nay. And sometimes we have to bring it up and take a look at it to make sure that we're, go forward with what they did. But we have all kinds of committees, one for traffic, we have committees for just about everything you can think of, and that is of people that are giving their time. And so I'd just like to mention that everybody always wants more, more, and more. You need to stand up and get elected if you want more, and then you get to sit up here and really, really do it, you know? So anyway, I also would like to talk about, just mentioned certainly what went on in Boston this week. It was horrible, and we definitely certainly felt for them. I just hope that it doesn't have any damage to the race. I hope they do it next year and do it in the same time and do it as many people as ran for it. I'm sure that there'll be a lot more security out next year, but I understand they have caught the one fellow, and he's confessing to everything, so I don't know exactly what all that means, what they'll do with him, but anyway, I just hope none of that happens in Garden Grove. And at this time, I close the meeting till May the 14th at 5:30 PM.